Good afternoon. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs will not come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to our local media outlets via electronic format on July the fourteenth, with a second notice provided on July twentieth. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. We have three things on today's agenda. First is the confirmation of the appointment of Athena Mano to serve as a member of the KGTF PBS Board. And then we have two bills to be heard. One is Bill three-three-one and Bill three-five-two. We'll start with the re-appointment of Ms. Mano. Did you want to speak to Mr. Tagadee?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have both Mr. Tagadee and Ms. Mano. Young lady, are you speaking? No? I still remember the first hearing. That was quite impressive. I was embarrassed. I thought, wow. I didn't realize your term was up already. You were serving somebody else's unfinished term. Okay. Mr. Tagadee.
I have provided, good afternoon, Vice Speaker and also members of the committee. I've provided written testimony. I'd like to read it into the, into the record in support. Dear Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I write to urge your favorable consideration of Ms. Athena Mano as member of the PBS Guam Board of Trustees. Ms. Mano actively brings to board deliberations the concerns and aspirations of her student cohort. Her perspective is especially important as viewer, consumer preference, and technology are advancing more quickly among her age group, away from broadcasting towards broadband formats, paralleling our technical upgrades and strategic planning to remain relevant to the viewing public. Furthermore, Ms. Mano is a leading student and practitioner of theater arts at the University of Guam. We at PBS Guam are keen to accommodate those who seek career roles in front of audiences and cameras, whether for artistic or business purposes. I rely on the sensibilities of Ms. Athena Mano, taking careful notice of her reaction and response as I present my ideas and initiatives to the board, and report to same on our challenges and progress. PBS Guam will not survive if it merely rests on the widely recognized laurels of its high-quality educational programming service of the past. It must craft a new legacy of service to the current generation at all levels of family viewing to honor and extend its heritage. The participation of Ms. Athena Mano on the PBS Board of Trustees is key to our success. Please confirm, Ms. Mano, to a full term of service on the PBS Guam Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tagadee. Ms. Mano.
Good evening, honored senators and honored guests. As many of you know, I've served on the PBS KGTF Board for over a year, and I served not only as a board member but also as the board treasurer. And through these, I've had to serve obligations such as coming in on a bi-weekly basis to sign in checks. Outside of the obligations that I am to serve for the PBS Board, I have also assisted as a judge for the PBS writing competition and also volunteered to work during the PBS Wine Event. Although I've only served a pa-, a year for PBS and KGTF, I still feel as if there is much more that I can do to help out PBS and through that, help the community. Thank you.
I remember your public hearing very well, and there were a lot more people that came to that one. And I'm glad to see that even in the short year that you were there, that you've already been elected as treasurer with the responsibilities of, I guess, you don't fall too far from the tree with being very responsible fiscally. So I'm glad to hear that. Are you also in a university's acting theater group?
I am actually double majoring at the University of Guam as an English Literature major, a theater major, and a woman in gender minors.
And your theater major, were you in production just recently?
Yes, I was in the production of Pocket.
That's what I thought that was. And when is that going to be shown, Mr. Tagadee?
When we have our Channel twelve point two.
In my lifetime?
Our second channel. Within a month or so. We're just trying to work out the cable and, you know, the GTA and DOCOMO rights and equipment installation.
And why didn't you tell him long before that that he needed to have everybody up there to film it?
Um, as far as I knew, we had planning underway.
Oh, okay, great. No, that, that was a phenomenal production, and I'm sorry that they didn't have any additional nights for more people to enjoy that production, but that was, yeah, I'm sure he shared your email, his emails that he got from me that are insisting that that be shown. And so I keep waiting, and I hope we do sufficient promotion before that.
Absolutely.
So that we get the widest coverage possible.
Yes.
Of course, you have my support, and if any of my colleagues have any, I want to recognize my Vice Chair Senator Tina Munier-Barnes, Senator Tom Hadda, who's, I guess he's no longer minority leader for the week, the chairman, the boss has come back, and Senator Frank Uggan. Anybody?
Please, host, I say, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Athena for continuing to step up to the plate to volunteer. I just want to say, your membership on the board will be a great asset to KGTF. As you, you and I know, having been there as a volunteer many years, have a very, very special place for KGTF or PBS, and I just want to say it's, it's volunteerism from, like, folks like you that really make a difference. I also see that you continue to work and were a part of the recycling program, you continue to tutor, you continue to help out with the university. So I'm, I'm just really, really glad that you can continue to find it in your heart to serve, and, and I just want to say, Mr. Chair, she's got my support. Thank you. God bless.
Ms. Mano, I just want to say that I'm really impressed with the self-confidence that you exude, and just looking at your resume here, certainly you're very much involved in the community, and I, I think you certainly would be a, a very good addition, re-addition back to the, to the board. I, now I can understand why you were saying that he was, he was impressed during your first public hearing, but I, I want to commend you for that self-confidence that you have, and you're very articulate, and you got qualities that I wish I had, so you certainly have my support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too, Ms. Mano, want to extend my congratulations on accepting a challenge. And it's always a challenge whenever you look at volunteering and serving our community and the entire public, but in this particular case, obviously, there are challenges with the finances, and I'm sure that as treasurer of the board, that you're very familiar with that in terms of being able to go out there and pursue some, some private sector donations and contributions, so that then you can keep the program as aggressive as it is today. So I thank you for offering yourself and your services. I think the chairman already alluded to the pocket play that you directly participated in, but if, as we look at an individual who's continuing to try to improve herself by pursuing higher education, by volunteering relief for life, coastal cleanup, and also my clinician history conference volunteer, that really shows that in fact, not only are you pursuing education to improve yourself personally, but you're also reaching out to the entire community. So really, on behalf of recognizing your generation stepping up, extending yourself as a public servant in this capacity, I commend you for doing that, and you certainly have my support and my endorsement. Thank you very much for offering yourself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, and I guess we'll have this up on the very next hearing, I mean, legislative session. So thank you again, and keep them in line. I, I don't want to have to see any strange audits coming from there. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If, it's okay, she just has, we just have to read a bill into the record and they haven't heard. Are you, no, he's not testifying. All right, Bill three-three-one, introduced by Senator Munier-Barnes. The sponsor will have a short statement.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Chair. This Bill three-three-one dash thirty-two LS, it's an add, an act to add a new section one-zero-three-one-five to chapter ten, title five of Guam Code annotated. It's relative to the online and public disclosure of medical licenses issued by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and I just want to state for the record, Mr. Chair, that this bill is meant to provide the public with access to a list of all licensed medical professionals on Guam. Currently, I want to note for the record that currently there is a list provided by the Guam Medical Association of their members, and there's also one that's provided by the Guam Medical Society of their members. However, there is no combined list of all the medical professionals that are licensed here on Guam. The Guam Medical Association and the Guam Medical Society provide a great service by publishing their membership directories, but there needs to be at least one list compiled by the Guam Board of Medical Examiners of all the individuals who live, who hold Guam licenses, and I do know that there are some folks here that may want to chime in on this bill. There have been requests in the past to see if there was any official government listing, and, and all we're asking is that this listing of all medical professionals be, be uploaded into an email, an email access, so that, that those who are looking for medical practitioners, I mean, or medical professionals, that, that, that there be a place that they can go through and look for the government that would be fair.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pangolin.
Hafane, senators, my name is Carlos Pangolin, and I'm here strictly as a resident of Baragota, a private citizen. I'm just, I just, I would just like to convey my support for the bill. Just to add to what you already stated, Senator Barnes, there is a list online that the Medical Licensing Board provides. However, it only contains the date and the dates at which all of the doctors expire for their licensure. You're correct that there is a GMA listing, there is also a GMS listing. Having worked in the health industry, I know for a fact that a lot of the information that's provided in these directories, they're, they're not always accurate, and particularly with respect to, I would say, board licensure, also the fact that a lot of these doctors are not actually working on Guam. They may be here for two weeks, they may join membership in the different organizations, but they don't, so they don't, they're not actually here. You may, they have, they may be listed, but if you even call them, they're not there. So in any case, I think there's a, a need in the community for an official source, and I think it's well within the ability of the board to produce something that they're already supposed to be doing in the first place. So in that, with that, yeah, please, thank you. Please pass the bill.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? I know you testified, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you testified in your private capacity, and, and you're very knowledgeable about this particular field, especially in light of your existing responsibilities. My question is, what type of information would you recommend be part of this database? And I only ask that because you mentioned the medical examiners, they already have information with regards to the doctors and the expiration of their certification.
Ideally, consumers should have access to just about everything that, that's allowed publicly, and that includes malpractice cases. There are statutes that are in place, but it's not being, you know, I guess, being implemented right now. Basic things, licensure, specialty, expiration, and so forth, you know, address, how to contact them. So there's a, those are very basic things that people all over the country have access to already, so there's no reason why people in Guam shouldn't have the same access to such information.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill three, three-three-one is officially heard. The next bill on the agenda is Bill three-five-two, and I'll have the sponsor, Senator Tom Hadda, read the title of the bill and give a short synopsis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, Bill three-five-two basically is an act that would do two things. One is it will provide an equitable pay, a more equitable pay for, for individuals who have been appointed and confirmed to fill the position of fire chief or police chief by basically allowing the compensation of their three, the average of the three annual salaries prior to appointment, as opposed to taking on the salary that's established by the Department of Administration. The second thing that it does is that actually it hopes that by then providing for this equitable pay and the option for the individual to return back to at least the position that he was in, he or she was in prior to appointment, that that will be guaranteed. But what this all will do is it will expand the pool of eligibles from which the governor could consider for appointment to the position of fire chief or police chief.
Thank you very much. Notices were sent out to all the departments, to both of the departments, and the only one here is Guam Fire. So I have several people that have signed up. Joey Manibusin indicates support, but there's nothing as to written or oral. Will you be giving testimony today? Okay. Why don't you come on up? Jose Cruz and Ronald Ruiz, if you want to give testimony today. Mr. Cruz? Okay. Then why don't we also bring up Philip? Philip. Let me just, okay, come on up. And Mr. Constantino. And why don't we just have the chief? There's four seats there, save in the middle seat. Let's start with Mr. Camacho.
Now, Hafane, senators, my name is Philip Camacho. Currently, I'm a lieutenant with the Guam Fire Department, the officer in charge of communications for the department. I'm, I'm here to testify in support of Bill three-five-two dash three-two and our current fire chief. The position of, the position of Guam Fire Department GFD fire chief is both prestigious and a demanding one. On one hand, the fire chief holds all the prominent and prestigious history that is the fire service, to include GFDs, and on the other hand, the management skills needed to direct almost three hundred employees. Fire Chief Sir Nicholas is a proven leader both in the civilian and military aspects of his life. It was that leadership drive and the willingness to help the people of Guam that may have inspired him to take the helm of this department during the middle of his career. This is important because as a then lieutenant, he knew that financially he and his family would be receiving less compensation with his accepting the position of fire chief, yet he still accepted the acting position and the scrutiny that came along with his confirmation. That shows extreme character. Since his appointment in September twenty-eleven and his confirmation in December of that year, Fire Chief Sir Nicholas has been a very active and proactive leader. He has been the voice and guiding force of a previously passive department, forging it into one of vigor and zeal. He is leading the charge. I write in support of Bill three-five-two dash three-two because like consumers in general, we get what we pay for. I'm not debasing the directors of other agencies. In fact, I commend them all for accepting a job that at times seems not too gratifying. However, I feel that the fire chief's position should be positively compensated for work completed and for setting goals for the department that will lead us into our future. I'm not writing this letter just in support of Fire Chief Sir Nicholas, but for any and all those who may choose to or desire to vie for the position after him. I would venture to say that most of the rank and file will not apply for this position if compensation would continue to be less than what they currently are earning. That in itself would be a deterrent for any of us who have the vision, desire, foresight, and drive to lead the GFD. I thank you for your time and the opportunity to write this letter in support of the bill.
Thank you very much. I also note that there was a written testimony provided by Chief Onkango, Captain Arceo, and the President of the Western Pacific Fire Chiefs, Mr. Torres. Mr. Manibusin.
Thank you, honorable senators. My name is Captain Manibusin. I'm assigned to the Fire Prevention Bureau as the Fire Marshal. I'm in full support of this bill because it makes sense that the head of the fire department be compensated and have the securities and the incentive to take on his position due to the level of responsibility and authority which it commands, and basically, that's it in a nutshell. The law makes sense. You want to have an incentive to assume such a position of authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Constantino.
Good evening, senators. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First off, as you know, I'm the Director or Homeland Security Advisor for Guam, so I truly understand what both chiefs go through. The position is very demanding because I have to work with them quite a great deal, especially during emergency or anything. So I do know that it's very demanding. Their department is much larger than mine. Theirs is over three hundred, if I want to understand. So they have more labor issues that they have to deal with, labor, payroll, and overtime and everything else, and that becomes a huge problem for them. I'm here as a disinterested party, number one. I am not a member of the Guam Fire Department, nor am I a member of the Guam Police Department, so I benefit, I do not benefit from them at all with this bill. The second thing is, is my salary is strictly from the federal government. My, my entire budget is federally funded, so again, I have no party involvement or anything like that, so I wanted to basically share some of the things that I've experienced. In the past life, I've asked some of the majors in the Guam Police Department, I know them through the National Guard, why don't you become the chief of police? And their answer was, I would lose a ton of money. And I'm talking about majors, the, the three highest rank after the Colonel and the chief. Why won't you join it? And because you have a lot of experience, you've, you've done a lot of vested interests in it, why don't you want it? Bottom line is, they, they lose, I don't know how many thousands that they would lose. And I know it's the difficulty of a person going from a certain salary and then take a reduction, maybe ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in reduction. That could be very detrimental to, to your lifestyle. The other thing also is, is I've talked to a fire, a former fire chief, Dave Paredo, and I said, Dave, why didn't you do this prior to your retirement? And his answer was, I could never afford the loss if I had done this while I was as a fireman prior to my retirement. So I've asked people, why don't you join? And these are people of great experience, great knowledge. I'm not taking anything away from Joey here because I know Joey from the National Guard. He was a commander in, in, in a war zone, so that, that, and just like yourself, I've seen you in action in a war zone, so I, I do know their capabilities. But at the same time, we have to look at factors that, why would you take that risk? Number one is a political position, just like anything else with, as a director, it's a political position, so you have to also deal with the political aspects of things. And as a fire chief or a, or a police chief, you also have to bring your family in, and your family will be involved in everything you do. So as a disinterested party, I do support this bill wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your insight. Chief?
Thank you, Senator and, and Committee members. First, I'd like to say thank you to, to everybody who has shown support and submitted testimony thereof. I really appreciate it. Thank you for allowing my testimony to be heard. I would like to make this testimony in support of Bill three-five-two dash three-two. However, I do have some recommendations. As I have stated in previous testimony, we all know that until recently, there has not been an across-the-board update on compensation of government of Guam classified, unclassified employees since nineteen ninety-one. This has been a direct violation of four GCA Chapter six subsection six-three-zero-one in which employee compensation shall be based on internal equity and external competitiveness, and that compensation will be targeted at the U.S. national average. Furthermore, the internal equity evaluation should happen annually with the external competitiveness evaluation conducted every three years. I believe that this is the base of the issue of such a drastic increase in salary ranges. It is not that the employees do not deserve it, it is the change that has been long overdue for over twenty-three years. If the government had followed the law, salaries would have been adjusted incrementally and thus more palatable. Today, after this body helped to update the salaries of the line employees and increased the minimum wage, we now have an opportunity to fix the compensation package of one of many deserving executive management positions. While a solution was proposed to fix these salaries across the board, it appeared to be too big of a pill to swallow. It is my hope that this is only the beginning, and soon my fellow cabinet members will be addressed accordingly. I took a large pay cut, pay cut to step up as, as the fire chief. Now, with the full and well-deserved implementation of the forty percent public safety pay, I continue to take larger cuts. The fire chief makes, makes less than eighty percent of its firefighters. The battalion chiefs who are operations managers make over thirty to fifty thousand more when all salary and benefits are calculated, while there are firefighter ones and twos who make anywhere from three to eight thousand dollars more. Externally, the fire chief of Anderson Fire and Rescue and the federal fire chief of the federal fire department here on Guam, both get paid over fifty thousand dollars more than I do, and I challenge you to find any chief executive that makes less than their subordinates. As a leader, we are not supposed to talk about our worth. That's a conversation that happens behind closed doors between the hiring authority and the executive employee. It is always a tough situation when you hold a leadership position because you're expected to hold your employees in front of yourself, let your subordinates get the new equipment while you take the old. Give them the best systems to do their jobs more effectively. However, a mentor once told me that a leader must not forget to take care of themselves. For only they, for only then can they maintain the motivation, the energy, and the drive to be the inspirational leader. Bill three-fifty-two dash thirty-two does that for the fire chief of the Guam Fire Department, and if my recommendations are accepted and included, can once and for all fix the other issues of this position that will benefit the organization, the government of Guam, and the service it provides to our island. So I'd like to recommend the following. One, to ensure that the fire chief is educated and competent, completely strike out page three, line eight through thirteen relative to the qualifications, and replace it with, C, must have a degree, must have a master's degree in public administration or closely related field or discipline at an accredited institution, and have at least ten years of experience in fire control, including control and extinguishment of fires and fire, and fire prevention, of which one year must be served in a position equivalent to battalion chief or higher. Number two, as stated in compensation of fire chief, page three, line fourteen through twenty, this only ensures that the salary is not lost, but it does not allow for an increase should a classified employee's three-year salary average be more than the salary established for heads of agency. Be more than the salary established for heads of agency. This can be addressed by allowing for a minimum ten percent increase on top of that three-year expected average salary. Otherwise, still no incentive will exist to accept more responsibility without an increase in pay. Number three, to appropriate, to appropriately compensate. And recognize that the fire chief is not like other administrative government of Guam directors. But is in fact a uniform firefighter that has the most responsibility and authority with the with the G F D. And performs as a fire officer, both administratively and operationally on the fire ground. Who may be called upon to make technical and tactical decisions and issue orders directing emergency operations. The Guam Fire Chief position requires a twenty-four hour duty to respond. As part of his or her work schedule and span of control requirements as exercise in the fire service. To achieve this, I bring in line the position compensation as to most, if not all positions of fire chiefs locally and nationally. Amend four G C A chapter six subsection sixty-two nineteen to read. Notwithstanding any other law, rule, or regulation, firefighters within the Guam Fire Department, including the fire chief. Shall be compensated at the regularly hourly rate of pay at one hundred and six hours. And shall be compensated at one and a half times the regularly hour rate for hours worked in excess of one hundred and six hours per pay period. Firefighters who are collaterally assigned administrative duties in addition to duties performed as a firefighter shall be compensated. In the same or similar manner as all other firefighters. Number four, to appropriately recognize that the fire chief is a peace officer. By virtue of being the authority having jurisdiction to determine, mandate, and enforce code requirements set forth in and not limited to. Ten G C A chapter seventy-two and seventy-three. Uh amend seventeen G C A chapter fifty-one subsection fifty-one zero one, one fifty-one one zero one. Definitions, Bravo, to specifically include the fire chief by saying. The fire chief and all firefighter personnel engaged in enforcement of the fire prevention code. All arson investigators and those G F D employees whom the fire chief specifically designated. All other portions of this bill relative to the fire chief I support uh to remain the same. Uh in closing, again, I'd like to thank you Senator Tom Addit for working with me on this bill. And and introducing it, and then of course the committee for hearing it. I could, I look forward to continually work with you on solutions to the issues that affect the Guam Fire Department and the people we serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Uh Chief Sir Nicholas, I'm gonna be um, I I hope you can anticipate, I'm gonna be sending uh some questions to the department. Um one of them being um um an accounting of the number of uh. G F D personnel who have retired within the past five years. Who are eligible uh for consideration for the chief's position. And basically what I wanna establish is the size of that pool from which uh right now uh the governor selects from. And then I'm gonna be asking the number of active uh G F D personnel. Who are currently eligible for consideration to see the size of that pool. And then I'm gonna be asking a third question, and that is basically. How much um of an income loss have you incurred uh since your appointment? Uh and during the time that you were on on duty as the fire chief, uh less the time that you were off island um on deployment. Um you have added uh uh so- some recommendations. Uh I certainly will, as the sponsor of the bill, I I will take a look at that. Um and um and and certainly give it due consideration. Um I've also been approached by others who says, well, can we expand this to include uh not just the fire department? And not just the police department, but maybe other similar uh departments and. And uh to that, my ni- my first reaction was. In only in the case of the fire department and the police department is the requirement, the qualification requirement. Such that you must have um uh many years of experience in either uh fire prevention work. Uh or in uh law enforcement work. Uh all other director positions really um uh do not require such s- specific uh requirements. Um so I I just don't foresee that this thing, that this bill uh would be applied to anybody else. Uh any other department. Uh but other than that, I will continue to work closely with uh with you and the police chief. Um insofar as uh um how we might uh further strengthen the bill. I do wanna recognize the fact, I think uh Chief Onkanko uh certainly gave a good testimony. And highlighted the fact that at least from a standpoint of uh pay inequity. Uh seventy-nine percent of your personnel earn more uh than you do. Uh and not just by a few nickels and dimes, but by quite a bit. Uh so I think that was certainly uh very good uh information that he provided, so. Uh I will be sending out that uh memo to uh to your department, asking for those three pieces of information. And I hope that uh you'll be forthcoming in providing that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I I have to admit that the uh good sponsor of the legislation had alluded to someone. Uh suggesting that in fact another en- entity be incorporated into this legislation, and I was one of those individuals that inquired with him directly. Because I think that when we look at law enforcement agencies. Who don the uniform and who have that extensive experience, it's always greater and it's consistent with its original statement. Of expanding that pool of potential candidates that can step up to bat and serve our island community. In many cases, or in a few cases today, we have to look elsewhere off island. And to me, that's absolutely not necessary when in fact we have a crop of of very good. Uh readily available, well-trained individuals, whether they be in the Guam Police Department, Guam Fire Department, or other law enforcement agencies. So that that was one of the requests that I forwarded to to sponsor this legislation, but I I agree with him. There are specific requirements right now that are set by law. That would allow this legislation to be able to proceed forward and perhaps applying similar requirements in other law enforcement agencies would also be appropriate. And so that uh we can be consistent with the pay adjustments. Quick question with regards to the hay plan. Uh that salary that was conducted by a third party. That would have applied to the Guam Police Department, would have applied to other agency heads in the fire and fire department. Would that pay compensation meet the original intent of this legislation?
If you if you're talking about the executive uh pay scale, that was in and and Senator Addit alluded to Senator, I mean uh Chief Onkanko's uh testimony. The breakdown that he gave was based on that, and it was eighty-one thousand uh for the position of fire chief. Uh but that's not what's actually implemented today. Right now, I'm, I still have the old salary, which is seventy-four thousand and ninety-six dollars.
So the Wage Compensation Act would not be consistent with the objective of this proposal?
Well, it 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 needs to be qualified, Senator. Uh the hay study was based on a twenty-eighty study. Two thousand eighty hours a year of, and that's basically an eighty-hour worker. So what happens with with firefighters, you know, F L S A has a whole section for us, a seven K exemption. Um and then of course Guam Codannated has an exact specific section for fire fire firefighters. Because we have a a different work schedule. And we we get paid at basically one oh six and fourteen, which is a hundred and twenty hour, sixty hours a week uh work schedule. Uh so when you're comparing, you know, when you when you try to bring it back to apples to apples, you gotta pay, you gotta compare that firefighter at the eighty-hour rate. To other, you know, similar management positions that are not fire service. So yes, um the executive pay scale would would fix it at that hourly rate. But what needs to be applied, which is my recommendation, is the subsection sixty-two nineteen. Which basically allows the fire chief to work the hundred and twenty hour schedule the same way as every other firefighter. And every other fire chief for that matter uh on this island as far as uh military and federal. So once you take that hourly, and even the hourly applied, that's today, thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents applied to that one oh six. Would actually make this position a lot more attractive.
Okay, I appreciate your your response. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Um just going back to that um uh the hourly pay allowing the hundred and six hours. W- wouldn't it be correct to say though that the that the 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 three annual incomes that you had prior to being appointed. Included the all the overtime and the hundred and six hours and everything that that you would have earned? And uh and so by providing the 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 average of those three years. It really accounts for for, you know, all the that hundred and six hours, and so I don't understand where you're coming from. When you say then convert it to to an hourly uh rate of pay.
Well, that that um accounts for it at a much lower hourly rate. Yes, it does. However, when you're the fire chief, you're still not, you know, you're not just an eighty-hour worker as a fire chief. Uh yes, you're expected to be in the office Monday through Friday. But every hour after that in between, you're expected to be ready to respond. I mean, most recently, uh the major fires in the south, um I responded out there for that. Uh that was, we were out there two, two, three in the morning. Um so it's instances like that where the fire chief is called upon to, for a higher level of decision-making and authority that's required. Especially when dealing with multi jurisdictions or multi multiple agencies at a particular fire scene. So what's not accounted for is is the amount of hours that you work as a fire chief. Uh versus your previous salaries.
If you were to apply your previous top three prior to assuming your responsibility. Then it would be similar to accomplishing the objective of this proposal. One caveat though. In December of twenty thirteen, the reinstatement of the twenty percent would not affect. The your, the application of your salary in this case. So that's the only ex- exception, I think. Uh Senator Addit, I think that it is, you're you're concerned and your statement is valid with that one additional caveat. That the twenty percent will not be incorporated as part of your salary calculation, only because it had not been effectuated prior to you assuming your responsibility.
Uh the other question, if if you just clarify this, ten percent. Um my my understanding is that uh I guess from your salary at year one. Uh would would be incre- when you go into year two. Uh that salary level would have been increased by by the whatever the increment percentage is, correct?
Uh that would depend if on your uh evaluation period. Uh at where I was, I was already at the two-year evaluation period. So I wouldn't have gotten an increment until the third year. So the the average salary would wouldn't have an increase. I believe it's only four percent anyway.
So so explain this ten percent that you're recommending.
Uh when you average the salaries, that was my salary as a as a fire lieutenant or a fire specialist, as what's recorded. But the responsibilities of a fire chief, you know, when you're taking on that position is way much more than what the fire lieutenant is. So what basically the bill's saying is that, let's say seventy thousand was my average salary. So now you're asking me to take on the position, or you're asking an individual to take on the position of fire chief. Much more responsibility and much more authority for still the seven thou- seventy thousand that he could still make at the firehouse. Um so what I think is that.
So so then in the case that you're citing, uh that three years average pay, well, let's see, what's what's the what's the salary for the chief right now? As established, seventy-four. Uh so if you were to take the salary that's established by D O A, it would be actually a bump up of four thousand dollars a year. From your average of seventy thousand. Correct. Yeah. But but now I guess what the bill uh looks at is the individual, the 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 battalion chief who is earning. A hu- or battalion chief who's earning a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Now, that individual, of course, no way he's gonna give up that position to take on a seventy-four thousand dollar job. Uh and so that, in that, in that case then, um the bill certainly would address that inequity. Uh but now we're talking about, you know, an individual who's at this level, uh just slightly lower than than the uh.
Or Senator, like my case, uh likely my average salary over three years. Never do it again, but uh it's just definitely cause for for a really more deeper uh. You know, discussion or analysis. Uh but for anybody to take, you know, to take on a higher position, higher responsibility with no increase in pay. Uh there's there's no incentive, so there needs to be some type of incentive on top of that average salary. Uh that's again, that's my opinion.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. I think the two of them have had their chance to ask all the questions and uh will consider this bill heard. Well, note for the record that G P T was notified and they did not show.